Good morning, everyone. The time is 9:01. We're going to go ahead and call the Lake County Planning Commission meeting for October 14th, 2021 to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, first thing we will do is the consideration of approval of minutes from the Planning Commission meeting from September 23rd, 2021.
Madam Chair, I move that those minutes be approved.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And in just a few moments, we will take up our 905 item. She found it, yeah.
Resolution 361.
Okay.
Do you get your hotel room?
I think so.
Nice.
Do we have anything like Friday and Saturday? Yeah.
Oh, man.
You have to have us check in.
Oh, that's a nice little spot. It'd be fun to wander around town.
Yeah, I've never been there, so I'm excited to go check it out, take some cool pictures.
Oh, yeah.
We've got a field trip planned to...
Isn't there, there's a grow site and some affordable housing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sounds really interesting.
Because I've only seen that grow site before they put any plants in. I haven't been to one that has actually plants.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm excited to see.
Yeah?
It's up and running. I mean, they should be getting close to it.
Oh, I'm sure they're in the midst of it, yeah. That's what's happening in Lake right now.
Okay, first order of business is our 905 item, consideration of the adoption of Assembly Bill 361, finding authorizing teleconference meeting during a state of emergency. Nicole.
Thank you, Commissioners. As I mentioned in the last, as I mentioned in the last Planning Commission meeting, the general order or the order from the Governor that waived certain parts of the Brown Act related to teleconferencing has ended. It ended September 30th. The legislature, however, has adopted AB 361, which allows for bodies subject to the Brown Act to make findings related to emergencies and determine what actions are necessary to affect safety and protect health of themselves and the public in relation to a particular emergency. So this is broader than just COVID, but it is also considerably less flexible. So the AB 361 requirements are that your commission make findings as to what you would need to do to protect health and safety in relation to an emergency going forward. Those actions would be rigid and refined by your decision or your findings, and you would follow them going forward in order to protect the health and safety of the public and your commission. As opposed to the order, which gave far more flexibility where the board could call in, either some of you could come in, some of you could leave or join remotely at various intervals at different times. That's not necessarily an option here. Your findings will define how you attend meetings as you go forward. So that means, for example, if you find that in the emergency of COVID-19, social distancing is necessary, and your commission is going to move forward with social distancing rules, you would make findings related to what that would look like. So either it could be that three of you attend in person and then two of you attend remotely, therefore it allows for less people to be in the room, and you would have enough space to social distance, or you could make a finding that it is necessary for social, you know, say, you find that the cases are increasing in the county or some other reason that requires it, that it's necessary for there to be nobody in the room, so that all of you would attend remotely, for example. And then you would make findings related to that, and that would be your way to address the AB 361 emergency response. However, that would not then allow for a change going forward until the 30-day mark. So your finding would govern, so if you were to find that three people in the room was safe, whereas two people remoting at the same time would allow for proper social distancing, that means that you couldn't then, the next week, the next Planning Commission meeting, determine that, well, you know, three people will stay at home or remote in, and two people will be physically in the room. You would be restricted by your findings in that instance. So if you determine that for social distancing, it's necessary for all of you, for health and safety reasons, for all of you to remote in, then all of you would be remoting in. You wouldn't then determine the next, at the next meeting, that some of you could come in and that some of you would leave, because that would be contrary to the finding that you make. So this would be the discussion now would be for findings on what your commission thinks would be the appropriate action in order to meet the COVID-19 social distancing requirements. There's a resolution attached to the item. It addresses what the board's action has been, what the state's actions have been, and what they have found. The board has also made this determination and has also given permission for the other Brown Act groups, meeting commissions, subcommittees, things like that, to make their own findings, and that's what you're doing now. So if you, so I would recommend, if you think that social distancing requires some of you to be out of the room and some of you to be in the room, I would recommend a three-to-two split, but it's up to you. You may also make a determination that it's safer to have everybody remote in. But again, that would be up to your discretion, your discussion, and the findings you make based on the severity of the emergency as it stands. Now, that wouldn't be a long-term decision. Every 30 days, you would have to revisit this and determine whether or not the emergency still requires that level of action.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Is this a case, is this a case of simply adopting the language of this resolution rather than making more specific findings, or?
You may make more specific findings, especially if you are addressing specific parts or addressing specific elements of an emergency. So like I said, with this, with social distancing, your commission can make a determination that in your assessment, social distancing would require that three of you be present and two of you be out, remoting in, then you can make that finding and make that specific to the resolution. But the resolution can be adopted as it's written.
So my understanding is that we're trying to continue our current methodology, which is making it optional and wearing masks?
Not exactly the same method, because under the, under the Governor's order, it was the option that, that the Commissioners could remote in without determining what the total number of people present and the total number of people absent would be safe. And that, it allowed some flexibility where Commissioners could, if they chose, remote in for safety reasons or for health reasons. And there wasn't, there would not have been any regulation that would have. The Governor did not provide substitution, substitute rules. He waived specific rules for the teleconferencing. This AB 361 provides substitution rules, and you're adopting those effectively. So they govern a broader range, not just your telecommuting in, but public access, what we do for digital access, and what we do when there's a failure of certain digital media as a commission, what your commission is allowed to do in those cases. There are a few, a few, a number of other rules that govern teleconferencing. We do, in fact, as a county, based on our past practices during COVID, meet all of those. But this will, but AB 361 will require not just your action here and your findings here, but there, the interpretation currently, and this is a new regulation, so it may be clarified later, but the interpretation currently is that it does not allow for flexibility and that it doesn't, that the Governor, Governor's order did, in that it doesn't allow for Commissioners to just determine one week that they will be attending and then determine the other week that they will not. The goal here is to determine what the emergency is, what action is required for that emergency, and then to take that action repeatedly until you revisit it 30 days later to determine what new action won't be necessary. Right, so if your determination is that two people should remote in and three people should attend in person, then that is, that is how it will be until the next 30 days, revisiting of the findings.
Quick question, Nicole. So if we have, if we do make the findings that three Commissioners have to be present and two have to be remote, if more could come, if let's say one more could come present, they couldn't because we need only three, or that's just the minimum that we need three here?
No. If your determination, because in this case, for example, if you make that determination, what you will be determining, what your finding will be, is that the risk during COVID-19 for exposure is greater when, when more than three members of the commission are in the room, because you can't social distance, for example, appropriately. Therefore, it is necessary under this emergency that two people, two of the Commissioners, and it could be, you could change which two from meeting to meeting, but that two of the Commissioners should be remotely accessing so that appropriate social distancing can be, can be performed. To increase the number would, of Commissioners attending in person, then after that finding would be that you are putting the public at risk and yourselves at risk by increasing the number of people, because then you would be violating your findings for social distancing requirements, what's necessary for health and safety for social distancing. So it would be that you would, you would stay within that numbered split, for example.
Yeah, and would we also have a limit of how many participants could be in the room as well, or how would that work?
The number of participants, your commission can address that, that however, that isn't necessarily part of the 361 analysis, because the 361 analysis relates to the Brown Act and so that your commission doesn't violate the Brown Act, and the public is not subject to the Brown Act, staff is not subject to the Brown Act, your commission is. So these findings are required under the new statutory regimen so that you could not, so that you don't put yourselves in a position of violating the Brown Act. And it would be your commission, you as Commissioners, who would be the ones who would be subject to that rule. So if you do make determinations later, as far as what would be safe for the number of people in the room, that would be a different decision, not related here to what you're addressing in this item.
So we could determine that for our own safety, two people should stay home?
You could.
But we could have packed audience?
Well, I, I understand that that seems like a conflict, and it would be an issue going forward, but in relation to the Brown Act requirements and what you have to find now for your attendance, so that you don't violate the Brown Act, that's what we're addressing now. And then your commission can follow through with that for the other parts of the meeting. Some of the requirements under 361, if you're, if you do make these findings, for example, some of the requirements under 361 have mandatory elements where then we have to make the meeting digitally accessible in various media, that we have to have participation methods, methods of participation for the public that are not on location. We also have to have commenting that is not restricted to the day before. We have to allow continued commenting, you know. There are other elements that address those things, but right now, this decision relates to your commission and your commission not violating the Brown Act by social, by remoting in.
And do those Commissioners who stay home, should we take such action? Do they have to notice that and make their space available for the public?
No, this action here for 361, for AB 361, the rules that 361 changes allow you to not follow the old Brown Act rules. But the findings have to be made in order to do that, and the other elements of 361 have to be met in order to do that. And you could do, you know, you could determine, your commission could determine that, you know, three members and should be in the room, whereas it's, you know, it's safe to have three members in the room and then two remoting in. You could also determine that it's safe to have everyone remoting, but that would be up to your commission.
Okay. And we will bring it back to, or we'll bring it to the commission for discussion if you guys have anything to say, or if you wanted to look at the resolution for 361. We can adopt.
I've read the resolution, and to me, that seems adequate. I have no problem with attending in person personally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, and I'd like to thank Nicole for figuring this out.
Absolutely. Does this require public input?
It is an item on the agenda, so it should be open for public input.
Okay, we will go ahead and open it for public comment, if anybody wants to comment on our 905 item for the resolution for AB 361. Nobody here in chambers? Is there anyone in the Zoom room who would like to comment?
I currently have no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you so much. We will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution 361 authorizing continued teleconference meetings of the County of Lake Planning Commission during the existing state of emergency.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed? Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. Moving on to our 910 item, public hearing to approve major use permit UP 20-12. Applicant owner is Charles Collins with High Caliber Farms. The applicant is requesting three Type A, three medium outdoor cultivation licenses and one Type A 13 self-distribution license for commercial cannabis cultivation and distribution. Location is 12194 White Rock Canyon Road, Upper Lake, California. And Eric has prepared a report. Good morning, Eric.
Yeah, Kerry's got the controls. Thanks, Kerry. Good morning, everybody. This is a major use permit for a commercial cannabis cultivation in the Upper Lake area. I'm gonna have to take my mask off momentarily here. Applicants applied for one A Type 3 medium outdoor cultivation, and they applied for an initial study. Well, we undertook an initial study for this, and so the result was a mitigated negative declaration to satisfy the SEQA evaluation. Applicant owner is Charles Collins. I believe he's participating remotely, and I believe that his consultant Craig Mountain is also participating remotely. So the details for the project, the request is for 37,466 square feet of outdoor cultivation in the form of one A Type 3 medium outdoor license, and they've applied for one A Type 13 self-distribution license to enable them to legally transport cannabis to and from their property. The site is much larger than the 20-acre minimum. It's 78.8 acres in size. It's zoned RL, which supports commercial cannabis subject to approval of a major use permit. It's located at 12194 White Rock Canyon Road in Upper Lake. It's not within a map farmland protection area. Here's a picture of the zoning of the site and the surrounding lots, and the site is here. The cultivation portion of the site is down close to the road, meets 100-foot setback requirements and all the other setback issues that are associated with commercial cannabis. This is a picture of the cultivation area. It's just under one acre in size, and again, it's, I don't know if you can see that or not, but that's a 100-foot setback required to the property line. And there's a 100-foot setback requirement down on the southern part also. Water analysis. Ordinance number 3106 requires that we require a water analysis that evaluates not only the water that would be used in the cultivation area, but also potential impacts to area wells and the water aquifer. So there is an evaluation prepared by Chico Environmental Science and Planning. Total demand for the aquifer was shown to be about 23,800,000 gallons of water annually. Projected water usage for this project, they estimated 309,600 gallons per year. That's close to what we had estimated as well. A typical outdoor cultivation site takes about, I believe it's 3,000 gallons per acre per day, based on 500 plants per acre. And if you assume six gallons of water per plant, that works out to 3,000 gallons per day per acre. So the 309,000 gallon estimate is fairly close to what we had projected as well. It's in the Middle Creek Water Basin, which is a low priority basin due to its rapid recharge rate, so the aquifer in this area is strong. The analysis does not state the total aquifer capacity, some of them do, this one did not. However, the recharge rate of the well was significantly fast. The water source is an in-ground well. The water depth begins at 2508 feet. The flow rate on average is 17.75 gallons per minute. Four-hour test was done in April 27, 2020, and this was right after the rainy season ended. So this may not be indicative of, say, a test then in October following the summer months. The well dropped 1.42 feet over a four-hour test period, and there was a full recharge after a 10-minute shutdown period. So the project analysis, we have to evaluate it for general plan conformance, for the particular area plan conformance. In this case, it's the Upper Lake Neese Area Plan, and for various parts of the zoning ordinance that apply to this project. So the major use permit findings that have to be made are that the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the neighborhood, that the site is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and the level of development proposed, and that streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the specific proposed use, excuse me. So the first one, we were able to make the finding based on the lack of negative feedback, really, as well as the size of the property, the area it's located in, the sparse population. There were a number of factors that we looked at to make the determination that it won't be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the neighborhood. Site's 78 acres in size, they only need to have 20 acres, and they're well over that for the one-acre proposed cultivation area. The site served by White Rock Canyon Road. In this location, the road's flat, it's wide, it's very Public Resource Code 4290 and 91, which is CAL FIRE Road Standards compliant. When I went to the site, I was accompanied by the building official, and both of us found that the road was more than adequate to serve the site. So findings four, five, and six that need to be made, that there are adequate public and private services available, that the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions of the code, the general plan, and in this case, the Upper Lake Neese Area Plan, and that there are no violations of the chapters listed on this slide. Finding number four, we are able to meet the main concern that we had, well, concerns that we had had to do with potential tribal conflict and with adequacy of water. And we found through the analysis that there is adequate water to serve the site. Power demands on an outdoor cultivation are fairly low, so we weren't too concerned about the grid and the impact to the grid that this project would have. They have onsite septic. Fire protection is provided by the North Shore Fire Protection District, who had no adverse comments, and police protection is through the Lake County Sheriff's Department. We found that it complies with the applicable portions of the code, the general plan, and the Upper Lake Neese Area Plan, and there were no documented violations of chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 of the Lake County Code. We have to make three additional findings. These are found in Article 27, which is the applicable portion of the code that applies to cannabis cultivation, that it complies with the applicable portions of Article 27. That's an old, please ignore the last part of number one. The water situation is fine. That the applicant is qualified to make the application, and the application complies with the qualifications for a permit found in Article 27. SEQA, we did the SEQA evaluation through initial study IS 20-12, and found that any potential impact associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant levels through specific mitigation measures. Therefore, our recommendation is to adopt initial study IS 20-12 and to approve major use permit 20-12. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Eric. Do the Commissioners have any questions or comments for Eric or Jake? Can you confirm that the applicant and his consultant are on, in the Zoom room, please?
Yeah, what were those names again?
Charles Collins and...
Craig Mountain.
Craig Mountain, please.
All right, it doesn't look like I have a name for either, or a named participant for any of those. I do have someone here with their hand up. They also raised their hand when the discussion started.
Hi, this is Craig Mountain.
All right.
Good morning, Kerry.
And Charles Collins is with me. We're sharing a terminal, because we have a good connection here at my office.
Good morning, thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions or comments for applicant or Eric before we open it up for public comment?
Not at this time.
No? Okay, anybody in chambers wish to speak on this item? Please approach the podium and be sure to state your first and last name. Good morning.
Morning.
Can I take this apart and just keep it on?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
My name is Robert.
Uh, my name is Robert Gary. I'm the tribal historic preservation officer for the Habemetal Pomo of Upper Lake. Um, I'm not here to oppose the project. We actually went into consultation for, for, um, this particular project. Um, what I am here for is the actual verbiage for, under the environmental review, uh, for the cultural resources. Um, we did, like I said, we did go, um, into consultation, followed, you know, AB fifty-two, um, addressed, you know, the concerns that were, were, um, that the tribe had actually with the project. Um, and basically because of the project details, um, we determined that, you know, there really wasn't gonna be, um, impacts to, to tribal resources. So all we wanted to do was to make sure that we went out and gave a cultural resource or, uh, 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 cultural sensitivity training, um, to project personnel, which we did. And so we carried that out. That was fine. It was basically to educate anybody that was out there working. Hey, these are some of the things to look for. These are contacts to be made if any inadvertent discoveries happen. Um, we did, um, consult a little bit about, um, the mitigation measures, you know, that we would like to see implemented. And I think, well, that's kind of why, well, that's why I'm here today. Um, the mitigation measures that, um, we've, I know I've been working with, you know, the planning department on, and I'm only speaking for the Upper Lake Territory. Again, I'm not here to speak for, you know, any other tribe or anyone else. Um, but the concerns that we had were, um, to make sure that a tribe was a part of the process when any inadvertent discoveries happen. Um, I go back to the environmental review under the cultural resources. Uh, what's being followed now is, uh, should any archaeological or, uh, paleontological or cultural resources be discovered during the site development? All activities shall be halted in the vicinity of the finds. The culturally affiliated tribes shall be notified and a qualified archaeologist shall be retained to evaluate and recommend mitigation measures if necessary. What we don't, um, approve of is just not being a part of the process. I think the tribe would like to be there as far as when any inadvertent discoveries happen, that, um, we're also notified and we work collaboratively, I think, with the archaeologists and to make recommendations and to evaluate. And then those still go back to the planning department director, I believe, for approval. So we're just wanting, and we, um, kind of went into discussion about this. I think, you know, Eric, um, we've discussed this about, uh, I don't know how many times, um, about making sure that, you know, that the tribe is a part of that process. That's those, you know, those items that are found, that's our history. Um, when those things are destroyed, they're non-renewable. Um, we just want to make sure that, you know, um, the process that happens, that we're just a part of that process. And so we did, um, after, you know, uh, months of work of trying to find out, you know, or find verbiage, um, to make sure that we were a part of that. Um, and this is kind of what we came up with and, and what we were, you know, trying to make sure that for every project that was actually in Upper Lake Aboriginal Territory, that this would be basically the mitigation measures for that area. Um, and so what we had came up with was, I mean, should any archaeological, um, I'm sorry, maybe the... Um, any, um, any human remains which are found in conjunction with the project on, on lands culturally affiliated with the tribe shall be treated in accordance with section two and three of the Upper Lake Habemetal, um, tribe's treatment protocol. Any other, um, cultural resources shall be treated in accordance with section five of the Upper Lake Habemetal Tribal Protocol. Should any archaeological or paleontological, um, archaeological or cultural material be discovered during the site development, all activities shall be halted. And the finds and culturally affiliated tribe will be notified and a qualified archaeologist retained will collaborate with, um, Habemetal Pomo of Upper Lake Tribal Representative to evaluate and to recommend mitigation measures if necessary, subject to the approval of the community development director. And that's all we wanted. And we just wanted to be a part of the process when any inadvertent discoveries happens with cultural resources. And so, um, we just want to make sure that, you know, that we can be a part of that, be a part of the mitigation measures. I know, um, the SEQA document, um, is really kind of, um, it's a border plate to start from. And then we really don't have anything set in place. You have seven, um, distinct tribes that are within the county. And I think that's something to understand, that, you know, we all are individual nations. We all have different types of, um, conditions, I think, when it comes to inadvertent discoveries, especially if human remains. And, um, tri- um, other counties are actually, you know, um, putting this into their mitigation measures too. I have, um, three, um, that I have that are from, uh, Morgan Hill, Milpitas, where they put these actually into the mitigation measures about how they're gonna deal with it. And it's basically the collaborating with the tribe and the archaeologists. So I guess I'm here to, um, try to get approval to make sure that we can be a part of that process, that we wanna be in, um, the evaluation and recommendation phase, um, if any inadvertent discovery has happened. And just to make sure that in, even in the mitigation measures, that it's stating that we're following, you know, AB fifty-two and then we're also following SEQA, um, in that, um, in concern or in conjunction with making sure that we're complying, um, with, you know, tribal concerns. So that's why I'm here today.
Thank you.
Quick question?
Yes.
I think the staff report, um, referred to an agreement you've reached with the applicant regarding cultural resources and that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Because we can't, we can't impose such an agreement, but we encourage the applicant.
Right, right. And that happens in consultation and, um, Mr. Collins and, and the tribe went into consultation. Everything went great. Like I said, you know, we looked at the project details, found out exactly like where we needed to be and what was gonna make our concerns feel good about, you know, our concerns. And so, you know, because of the details, we found that, hey, you know, we don't, we don't need, you know, somebody to out, you know, monitoring, we don't need anything. We just wanna give cultural sensitivity training to anybody that's out there. If you do find something, th- this is who to contact, right? And, and we did that and we fulfilled that. But I think it's just down to the conditions of approval for this and anything, I think, you know, um, that's happening in our territory. Um, this is kind of some of the verbiage that we would like to be a part of that so that not only the county, but even the applicant knows that, hey, these are laws, federal and state laws that have to be followed and we're a part of that process. So, um, that is kind of asking.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you. I did see your letter, um, and I was ready to ask about that, whether you did achieve the consultation. And just as a note, um, part of the conditions of approval are the one that you read as well as the training. So if we do approve the motion that, that is listed, then these two items, they're CUL one and CUL two will be conditions of approval. So thank you.
Jake, are there any other hands raised in the Zoom room?
Uh, currently the only hand, I have a hand raised from, um, Andrew Thomas, who was
Okay, and they don't wish to speak?
They're, they're unmuted if they wanna make a comment.
Hi, um, hello, this is Craig Mountain from Ryzel. Um, I'm the consultant and I just wanna thank the board, um, for meeting today and considering this project. We were, uh, happy to comply and actually really interested in working with the Upper Lake Habemetal Pomo Tribe and understand the cultural significance. And it was actually a really, uh, enlightening project, uh, for me. Um, and I also would like Charlie, uh, to have a chance to just describe himself and the type of operator he is, uh, against the backdrop of other operators, I think, in Lake County. I think that's a, a specific thing that the, the commission should hear. And I'll give it over to Charlie Collins.
Hi, I'm Charles Collins.
If you could just speak a little bit louder, that would, um, be a little bit helpful here for everyone here in chambers. Please.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlie Collins. I'm from Upper Lake. I've been in the Upper Lake, Lake County area all my life. Um, I'm just a small, small-time guy trying to make a, make a small business out there.
Okay, uh, we appreciate your comment. Um, does any, is there any other hands raised in the Zoom room? I don't wish, I don't think anyone wishes, uh, to speak further on this item in chambers.
Uh, no, there are currently no hands in the Zoom room.
Thank you, Jake. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Um, Madam Chairman?
Please.
There's a conflict in between the, uh, cultural condition in the staff report and in the conditions of approval. The one in the staff report is actually the most current. The ones in the conditions of approval were, uh, unenforceable by the county, so they need to actually reflect what's in the staff report.
So, public comment, um, did I close it? I did close public comment. Okay. Okay, um, I don't think so as of right now.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know what the differences are because, um, I'm not seeing the conditions of approval in the staff report. Um, it's CLU one. Is it, is it significantly different from what the gentleman said?
It is. Uh, the conditions of approval refer to the Upper Lake Habemetal Tribe. Uh, the conditions in the staff report do not. They're more boilerplate and they're basically what our county councils advise us to use, um, for cultural resources. So my recommendation would be to use the, uh, replace what's in the conditions of approval with what's in the staff report.
Well, I think, I think it's only fair to ask, uh, the gentleman from the Upper Lake Tribe, how he feels about it.
Commissioners, if I may, one moment. Go ahead, Nicole.
My understanding, if I'm, if, if I could try and provide some clarification, my understanding is that, um, the issue was with the reference to the sections one, two, and I think five of the Upper Lake Habemetal Tribal Protocol within the conditions for a permit. I wasn't part, I didn't participate in the AB fifty-two consultation. I haven't seen the, um, protocols. I don't know what they contain. However, a permit application is not the place to enforce other laws or other agencies' protocols or, um, other, i-if they exist elsewhere, then they have an application on their own. This permit is not the place in which to enforce them. So if there's state law that applies, for example, we wouldn't list that here either. Um, however, if your commission finds that it's, that it's appropriate based on the evidence before you today, you may, you may list specific tribes within these conditions that they should be contacted, a particular tribe by name should be contacted, should certain resources be discovered. You may include, um, requirements, if the evidence before you supports that, that the tribe be involved in the steps for, say, ground disturbance, um, activities. You may, um, include, and it does, uh, include training for, uh, staff, requirements for training, requirements for monitors, requirements for the archaeologists, and requirements to allow the tribe by name, if you choose, in those conditions. What, I think the objection here was that we were incorporating a, another set of rules within our, within the county's permit and the county cannot enforce those.
Okay, so we could just identify the tribe?
You, you could.
Okay.
If, if you choose. And a lot of the language in the cultural conditions, the two that are listed in the conditions that were provided today, a lot of the language is very similar to what, um, is, is usually provided for cultural resource mitigations in circumstances, I think, like this. You're gonna have to ask staff, you, you may wanna ask staff to clarify, uh, generally speaking, what ki-, you know, what kind of impacts and what this is intended to mitigate. Details to the point that they can provide it because this is protected information. But, um, uh, cultural number one, CUL number one, does cover what is normally covered except for, I think the objection was the reference to the tribal protocols. And the tribe has an option in which to enforce those tribal protocols in an agreement that they have entered into with, with the, um, the applicant. And if we include those here, we are effectively not only enforcing the protocols, but a third-party agreement. And that's not what we can do in a permit.
Okay. Thank you. Public comment is closed. Um, I can go ahead and reopen it if you want to chime in. Go ahead.
So, I mean, I, and I understand.
Oh, just be sure to state your name again, please.
Robert Gary, um, tribal historic preservation officer for the Habemetal Pomo of Upper Lake. Um, I, I totally understand the tri-, the tribe's treatment protocol. Um, like I said, you know, every individual tribe has how they deal with, um, cultural resources, um, whether or not they have a tribal treatment protocol, really that's up to them. Um, we do, we have an established, um, following SEQA laws, making sure that, you know, we're, we have the ability to do what we need to do, I think, when protecting and preserving those cultural resources. And so we've established one. And I know we've made it, you know, available to, to let, you know, especially with the applicant. And so I do, I do get it. I, I understand as far as, you know, with the actual applicant, because we do go into consultation and we, we feel those treatment protocols are actually put into that, um, into that agreement as far as what we're gonna follow. Um, I, I think, you know, um, if we can just, you know, state that, um, that we're, that the tribe itself, I think it's really, um, important to know which tribe we're dealing with. That way, you know, even in the, even in the mitigation measures, it's saying specific, you know, tr- tribes that, that's being affected or, or that's being a part of this process. But to just add us to making the evaluations and then the recommendations, I think that's the bigger part of it. And then, um, in, in there, um, making sure that, um, that we're adhering to, uh, like consultation mitigation measures shall be carried out in accordance with applicable state and federal law, including California Public Resource Code, and then go through all the things that we're following. But I, I just would like to make sure that, you know, the tribe, the specific tribe is actually a part of evaluation, any inadvertent discoveries that happen, that we're working collaboratively with the actual, um, you know, the, the archaeologist that's being retained. Um, and any recommendations that's gonna happen, that it will come from both of us. Back to the county.
Well, it sounds to me, it says the culturally affiliated tribe. So to me, that would mean your tribe.
That we're being notified, but a archaeologist is being retained to make evaluations and recommendations. So we're not a part of that. We're just being notified that finds were, were made. Um, we just wanna be a part of working with the archaeologists, making sure that we can evaluate it along with the archaeologists, make recommendations for it.
And is that not part of the agreement you have with the applicant?
Um, for the applicant on, on what we have, like, that's what we were talking about earlier. So she was saying, um, as far as the protocols, when we go into agreement, yeah, the protocols are in there as far as what to follow. So I can see go, take, taking that out if that's a conflict, I think, with having it in, uh, a document for the county. But as far as the, um, conditions of approval, just making sure that we're a part of the process for evaluations and recommendations.
This is common. This comes before the commission a lot. Other tribes have brought the same kind of issue. And we can only go so far. We cannot instruct the applicant to reach a specific agreement with you.
Right. No, I, I...
And the conditions, I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Field, that the reference to the culturally affiliated tribe, um, is adequate for our purposes. But, um, I'm just, I'm hopeful that the applicant has understood you and has seen the language you're referring to.
Yeah. And, and, in, in the conditions, like I said, it says, um, culturally affiliated tribe, which is, that's fine, you know, that's, that's with us. But it doesn't, we're not there to make any evaluation or recommendations along with the archaeologists and we want to be a part of that process.
If I may, please. Staff has in the past included language that, that not only required consultation with an archaeologist, but also with a specific named tribe when resources have been discovered. That is an option. You can, um, you can ask, uh, staff to provide language that would meet that criteria, that would make a requirement that not only, that if resources are discovered inadvertently, that not only is an archaeologist, um, consulted, but the tribe will be consulted, notified and consulted as well. So there, there, there is language that staff does have that allows for that. You may also, if you choose, rather than just culturally affiliated tribe, you may also include the name of a specific tribe, should you feel it necessary and the evidence before you supports that condition.
Thank you, Nicole.
And just so it's clear, um, I'm not speaking to the content of the protocols.
Right.
Should a consultation going forward in the future find, staff find through that consultation that the elements of the protocols should be part of conditions, then they could potentially do that. I just, here they're mentioned as protocols. I don't know their content. I don't know if, um, if it's supported by the, and conversely, also, you would also not know whether the conditions of the protocols would be supported by the evidence in the record. So far, it reads just as, as enforcing a third-party protocol, rather than just incorporating the conditions of the protocol into conditions for the permit going forward. But that would be something that would be addressed by staff in a consultation with the tribe to determine whether or not those protocol elements are good conditions for a permit, if that makes sense.
Well, it sounds good, that sounds like a good solution to me. I think we should send it back to staff for those changes because...
I've actually, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I've actually got some amended wording of that condition.
If you could read it, please, Eric, thank you.
Sure. Uh, CUL dash...
CUL-1, "Should any archaeological, paleontological, or cultural materials be discovered during site development, all activities shall be halted in the vicinity of the find, and the Upper Lake Habemetal Tribe shall be notified and qualified archaeologists retained and shall coordinate with the Upper Lake Habemetal Tribe to evaluate the finds and recommend mitigation procedures if necessary, subject to the approval of the community development director. Should any human remains be encountered, they shall be treated in accordance with Public Resource Code, Section 5097.98, and Health and Safety Code 7050.5."
Thank you for that amendment, Eric. I'm going to go ahead and, do you have anything else to say before I close public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Before I do so, Jake, there's no hands raised in the Zoom room, correct?
Correct. At this time, there are no hands. We have a hand raised from the applicant again.
Okay, well, you can go ahead, let him speak before I close public comment. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Hi, this is Craig Mountain with RISL. I just want to thank Robert and Eric, and we understand what's at stake, and we're totally ready to help in any way, and I just want to thank you all.
Thank you for your comment. We will go, we will go ahead and close public comment here in chambers, as well as in the Zoom room, and bring it back to the commission for a motion.
I'm comfortable with the revised language that Eric just offered.
I'm happy with the amendment, but I have some other concerns. I read the property management plan, and I'm wondering, I mean, it seemed like it was very drafty. It had punctuation, spelling errors on every single page. There were internal notes on it. It's over a year old, and I'm wondering, do we have any update on that? I mean, if you look at the top of it, there's the address, and the parcel numbers don't correspond with the staff reports. I just felt like it was really sloppy, and I'm, it feels wrong to accept something based on a management plan that's so sketchy. Do we have any updates on that?
I think I'm going to let the applicant address your concerns about that.
Commissioners, please. Before we get into this, before we get too far away from cultural resources, I just wanted to clarify, we're not changing the conditions to exclude cultural that, CUL-2. We are changing the language of CUL-1, and also maintaining or keeping CUL-2. Is that correct?
We're keeping.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Additional, thank you.
Would the applicant be able to respond to the questions regarding the project management plan?
Hello, this is Craig Mountain. Can you repeat the question?
I had some concerns about the property management plan. It seemed like it was an early draft. It seemed very sloppy. There were a lot of errors, sentences that weren't sentences, and I'm wondering, I mean, there were, there were internal notes by the.
I'm pretty sure you somehow got, I had an old director of compliance here who filled out that. I'm sure you have an antiquated property management plan, and I do believe I've given an updated and complete one to Eric since then.
It'd be nice to, it'd be nice to see that. I mean, I feel like I'm inadequately prepared to make a decision about this.
What were your main concerns besides the punctuation of the project description?
I have other concerns. The cannabis control, people wrote 10 pages of adverse comments about it, improvements to the initial study. I'd just like to see them addressed. I mean, I'm not seeing anything that jumps out at me as being improperly, you know, addressed as far as just going through the X, Y, Z of it, but it just was very sloppy, and I think that we should be expecting a little bit higher level of information.
I don't recall if I got a revision to that property management plan or not. I've got quite a few files, and I don't have them memorized by any means. So you can continue this hearing probably to October 28th to give me an opportunity to see what I have. And if they do, in fact, have a revision, I can upload that and provide it to the planning commission, if you feel that it's material that you received that.
Well, I think that I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't. So yes, I would.
It's up to the commission.
Eric, when you, when you receive those comments from the cannabis board or whatever it's called, do you, do you respond to that in the sense of amending the staff report or updating it in certain ways based on those comments?
No, they don't always coincide timing-wise with the hearing procedure. In fact, it's not uncommon to get comments back after the hearing is concluded.
Yeah.
I attempted to address comments that were provided to us, and they have a, it's kind of a form letter they use.
Oh, I've read a lot of them.
Comments are slightly different depending on the project, but I've, I've fully addressed 10 or more pages of comments from this organization, resubmitted to them, only to receive yet another 10-page letter that found other problems. So, you know, I, I called Kevin Ponce, who's the supervisor with Cal Cannabis, and he said, "Well, actually, Lake County's got some of the best initial studies that we've received." And so the quality of the initial studies that we're sending to them is fairly high, according to him. They hire attorneys, by the way, to go through and find the flaws, you know, so anything that they can pick apart, they do, and that's what results, is a 10 to 12-page letter, which is standard.
Right, I've read a lot of them. The way I read that is, they don't, they don't say that the project is flawed or inadequate, but that the report could be strengthened with additional information about this or that. And that seems to me, that could be an endless kind of circle.
Yes.
That one gets into with a bureaucratic agency.
That's exactly what I see it as.
Well, let me ask you this. The letter that I was presented with is dated August 13th, and yeah, there seems to be a boilerplate thing that they use, but I think that most of the ones I read were relevant. And did you have time to address those? I know they're, they're sideways on here, but.
No, I haven't addressed those.
Is the property, hi, this is Craig Mountain with RISL. I'm going to take a moment. Is the property management plan that you have, the one that's posted on the agenda next to the, in the Lake County system? Because the one I'm pulling up offline is definitively like a preliminary one, and my old employer was in the habit of pushing out things before they were ready. So I did have to, this project did require me to go through and rehash the property management plan, and I'm sure Eric has a one that's more recent than the one that's posted on the county website.
Yes, it, that is the one I was looking at. Thank you.
Yeah, and I apologize, that one is wretched.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion and to see what, what might transpire.
Please, thank you.
I move that the planning commission find that the initial study IS 20-12, applied for by high-caliber cannabis on property located at 12194 White Rock Canyon Road, Upper Lake, and further described as APN 022-010-01, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 14, 2021, and as amended here today.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion shall carry.
Madam Chair, I move that the planning commission find that the use permit UP 20-12, applied for by high-caliber cannabis on property located at 12194 White Rock Canyon Road, Upper Lake, and further described as APN 022-010-01, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 14, 2021, and as amended here today.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion shall carry. Please note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Moving on to our 915 item, it's a public hearing to consider a five-year extension for a major use permit UP 11-09. Applicant is La Monica Signs. Proposed project is a five-year extension for an existing billboard. Location is 255 Soda Bay Road, Lakeport, California 95453. Eric, take it over.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The way our code's set up, anytime an extension is granted, it has to go back to the original approval body. And in this case, the planning commission was the original approval body in 2011 for the billboard. They're renewable every five years. That's a requirement within the development code. That's Article 45, but let me get into the PowerPoint here. If I get my fingers to work. All right. So they requested a five-year extension for the billboard. It's on a light industrially zoned property. The site's about 7.6 acres in size. It's located at 255 Soda Bay Road. It's zoned M1 AA, which is airport overlay, DR, which is design review, SC, which is scenic combining, and WW, which is waterway. In the general plan, it's shown as being industrial and resource conservation, and it is not located in a flood zone. Here's a picture of the actual property. It's south of Lakeport. There's an aerial photo showing the approximate location of the billboard. We have to do water analysis for everything, so I indicated that none was needed for the billboard. Project analysis, we have to verify that it complies, actually, that was done in 2011. General plan conformance, Lakeport area plan conformance, and zoning ordinance conformance. That was not a big factor within the, within the extension request, but that analysis had been undertaken when the billboard came through the planning commission back in 2011. Basis for extension, use permits that are approved for billboard signs shall expire after, I can't read what's behind that pop-up. Five years unless applications for renewals are filled, filed and granted. Any subsequent permit renewals may be approved for a maximum term of five years. So that gives you the authority to authorize an additional five-year extension. So the CEQA analysis, we categorically exempted it because no changes were proposed, and it meets the requirements under CEQA Section 15303 Subsection C. So our recommendation is to adopt categorical exemption 21-52, and to approve major use permit extension UPX 2102. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Eric. It's pretty straightforward. We will go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone in chambers wish to speak on this item? Okay, anyone in the Zoom room, Jake?
I know there are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Can someone tell me what scenic combining is, as far as zoning? I'm ignorant on this.
Well, it affects mainly the height of buildings. It also affects certain things that can be done within the zone. And in particular, it puts a limit on the number of greenhouses that a cannabis cultivator can put on a property. It limits accessory structures to a height of 15 feet. It limits residences to a height of 18 feet until they get to a certain distance away from the source of the scenic combining overlay. And then they're allowed to go higher, depending on how far away from the, in this case, Highway 29, which is a scenic highway. Scenic combining does not apply to commercial or industrial properties. They are exempt from height limits, use restrictions, et cetera. So the scenic combining is impractical, in my opinion, for a light industrially zoned property.
Such as what we have in front of us with the billboard, correct?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I'm not a big fan of billboards. And I've voted accordingly in the past. However, the location of this seems appropriate, and, and it's an existing billboard. So under the circumstances, I would be prepared to support the application.
I have a comment as well. I think billboards are displeasing, and I think as a method of advertisement, they're obsolete. I'm not sure I'm the person to be making that decision. But it seems wrong. Lake County has only its environment and scenic beauty to offer tourists and residents, and I think we should do everything we can do to preserve that. So with Nicole's nod, I would, I would not support extending this.
Commissioner, I can't give you direction on voting one way or the other.
Well.
The task before you today is to make a determination based on the facts and circumstances presented to you in relation to the ordinance, the county ordinance today. Eric has explained to you, there is a billboard that isn't existing. We have criteria that allows for the extension of permits that are existing. If the individual is within the timeframe of renewal, and it meets the other criteria that staff has laid out for you, then if you find that it does meet that criteria, then you vote yes. If you find that it does not meet that criteria, then you vote no. Or if you do not have enough information, then you can direct staff to bring that information back to you.
Okay, so I will respond to that. I find it aesthetically displeasing. I have seen the sign. I do not think it has been well-maintained. So thank you, Nicole.
Okay, any other comments from the commissioners, or is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
I move that the planning commission find that the use permit extension UPX 2102, applied by La Monica Signs on property located at 255 Soda Bay Road, Lakeport, further described as APN 00A-019-64, is exempt from CEQA because it falls within the categorical exemption Class 1, file number CE 21-52, based on the findings set forth in the staff report dated October 14, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Me. Motion shall carry.
I further move that the planning commission find that the use permit extension UPX 21-52, applied by La Monica Signs on property located 255 Soda Bay Road, Lakeport, further described as APN 00A-019-64, does meet the requirements of the Lake County zoning ordinance and that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the categorical exemption CE 21-52, which was adopted for this project, and the use permit extension, file number UPX 21-02, be granted, and shall extend this use for a period of five years, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 14, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Motion shall carry. Please note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is, if there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Moving on to our 920 item, it's a public hearing to consider approving Amendment MMU 21-07 of original use permit UP 19-25. Applicant owner is Coast Oak Carl Tharp. Proposed project is to convert. Proposed project is to convert 14,080 square feet, I'm assuming, of mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation to 15,000 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. Effects previously approved, file UP 19-25. Location is 7560 Highway 29, Kelseyville, California. Eric?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, this is a request to amend a major cannabis use permit that was approved in 2019. Actually, it was approved in 2020. It's got a 2019 date on it. The applicant was approved for a combination of mixed light and outdoor cultivation. In this particular case, he's got an area that's 14,090 square feet of mixed light that he wants to convert over to 15,000 square feet of outdoor. It's in the same footprint as was approved for the greenhouses. So he simply wants to swap out greenhouses for outdoor. Square footage increases slightly, but he's got an 80-acre parcel. So he's well below what he could put on the property. So the project details. I mentioned the original use permit that had allowed 32,000 square feet of total cultivation area. Of that 22,000 square feet was greenhouse, mixed light. 10,000 was outdoor. So this would essentially increase the outdoor to 25,000, and it would decrease the 22,000 mixed light by 14,090, I guess is what it was. Yeah, he seeks to convert the 14,090 square feet of mixed light to 15,000 square feet of outdoor. He actually predates the self-distribution license, so he has requested that, which can be granted through this process. I mentioned the subject site is 80 acres in size. It consists of three contiguous lots that are zoned RLB5SC. Gave the location already, and it's not within a mapped farmland protection area. So it's right at the intersection of Bottle Rock Road and Highway 29. If you were to turn left, that's how you'd access the property from Highway 29, assuming you're going towards Lower Lake. This is the original cultivation area. The water source for this is a pond that's a little bit hard to see, but this is it right here. And the cultivation area that would be affected is this one right here with the red greenhouses. This is the original approved map that came through in 2019. I thought I had a modification to that. Well, it's occupying the same area. It would just convert from buildings to outdoors and raised fabric pots. In 2019, we did not require cumulative water analysis, but we do now. So the applicant prepared one, had one prepared by Caitlin Gilmore, who is a civil engineer. I indicated already, the water source is an above-ground pond. The pond is about two and a half acres in size, about eight feet deep, and it has a capacity of 7.7 acre-feet, which equates to 2,500,000 gallons of water. Estimated annual water usage is about 1.2 acre-feet, which equates to about 400,000 gallons per year. That's for the entire cultivation site. That's not for this amendment. The evaluation put a recharge rate of 11 acre-feet per year during a drought year, and they used a multiplier of 33% of a non-drought year, which is pretty consistent with the water analyses that I've read. Analysis concluded that the pond's capacity and recharge rate exceeds the total demand. Okay, there's the pond. Okay, here's the originally approved plan. And here is the proposed plan, which is within the same footprint of the originally approved greenhouse area. Analysis, we had to evaluate it for general plan conformance, for Kelseyville area plan conformance, and for zoning ordinance conformance. We also had to compare it up against Article 60, subsection point 33, reapplication for amendment. And then it goes into some detail within the subsection about why this is the appropriate way to modify the original decision. Sequoia, we felt it was categorically exempt because of the low square footage that was occurring, which is under 1,000 square feet of additional cultivation area. So it's eligible for categorical exemption under Sequoia Section 15303 Subsection C. Consequently, our recommendation is to adopt the categorical exemption and to approve the amendment MMU 21-07 to major use permit UP 19-25. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Eric. Before I open it up to public comment, do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Or you want to wait till after public comment? Okay. I will go ahead and open public comment. Anybody in chambers wish to speak on this agenda item? Okay. No hands are raised. Jake, do you have anyone in the Zoom room that would like to speak?
Currently, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay. I will give it just a few seconds to see if anyone raises their hand. I think it's pretty straightforward with the change. I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have some concerns about odor, and my understanding is that we do not currently require any evaluation for volatile organic compounds. I would like to see some kind of bigger approach. I think that these kinds of projects have, when all put together, they have a big effect on our community. And at some point, I'd like to see us as a commission address that. It doesn't seem fair to me to just kind of randomly make decisions about whether a project can be allowed to proceed without this data that we need about the odors. But I have noticed that we're getting a lot of odors in this community, and it's offensive to a lot of tourists. That's my only comment.
Eric, were there any negative public comments received about this?
No, and he's been cultivating for over two years. So we would have heard any complaints that arose by this point in time.
I remember this when it first came before the commission.
Yeah.
And...
Is your mic on?
It's on now.
Okay.
And my colleague's point is well-taken. However, this strikes me more as a business decision that the applicant has made. And because it's an outdoor grow, the same requirements for odor control would apply if he's allowed to go to full outdoor cultivation.
Well, if we were to get any complaints on it, he's already growing outdoors. He just isn't growing this much. He'll add 15,000 square feet of canopy area to the outdoor cultivation.
Oh.
So he's, so there's, I thought this was strictly greenhouses being converted to outdoor. He obviously is doing...
Well, this is, yes. But he was approved for a combination of outdoor and greenhouse.
In the initial application?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, he was approved for 10,000 square feet of outdoor. This upped that to 25,000 square feet of outdoor.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So we have not had any complaints from any neighbors over the past two years, based on 10,000 square feet of ongoing outdoor cultivation.
But what's being cultivated now is all in greenhouses, correct?
No, it's mixed. It's 10,000 square feet of outdoor, the rest of it's greenhouses.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, please.
To clarify, Sequoia requires an analysis of a number of potential impacts to the environment. There is a guide that staff follows that lists what they should look at. Amongst those elements that they must look at, the impacts that they must look at is odor. Odor is an impact that must be considered and analyzed and mitigated under Sequoia. If you feel that the evidence before you does not address that correctly, you can ask staff to clarify and explain their analysis and how they reached the conclusion that they reached, or if there is not enough information for that analysis, or you find that it's insufficient for the analysis, the conclusion that they've reached, then you can certainly ask for more.
Eric?
Yeah.
So I remember there was a new ordinance that came in a little bit while back, I think it was the beginning of the year, about it being a certain distance from the freeway that you needed to be in greenhouse to do that odor mitigation. But I feel like we're way far from the freeway, the distance that was required, and it is also surrounded by, as we can see on the map, by like a lot of trees. So even that's also like another step that people are asked to plant trees around the area for the odor mitigation and for pesticide control for any incoming pesticides for the farm as well.
Well, the outdoor has different factors that affect the extent that the odor would impact neighbors, part of its distance. In this case, I think it was over, I'll take the slide down. The cultivation site is roughly 1,000 feet from the edge of the highway. And there are properties that are a little bit denser in population that are beyond the highway, but the prevailing wind direction actually blows away from the more inhabited area, and it blows up towards the hill behind this property. I have required, or I've recommended, I should say, odor control measures, including planting fragrant plants around outdoor cultivation areas, particularly when there's a population base that's within nose-shot distance. In this case, it's pretty sparsely populated. The properties are large, and the owner of these three lots also owns the property to the immediate west. And he's got another 80-acre chunk located right next door to this property. So there's quite a bit of land under the same ownership. And again, the prevailing wind directions typically come out of the northwest. They blow to the southeast. That's not always true, but it's usually the case. And so in this case, it would blow odors out of the populated area and into the hilly area where there's basically BLM land. So we didn't feel there was a need for any additional odor control measures for this project.
Yeah, because I don't see any tightly packed or any residential high density in the area, so I don't believe that it's necessary for that as well.
I appreciate the additional information, too, with the ownership with the surrounding parcels. Any other comments for staff from the commission? Okay, if anyone's prepared to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the planning commission find on the basis of the original initial study IS 18-62 and the allowances in Sequoia Section 15303C that allow minor expansions to commercial uses to be exempt from further Sequoia review that the amendment application applied for by Carl Tharp, representing Coast Oak Inc. on a property located at 7560 Highway 20, Kelseyville, California, further described as APNs 007, 092, 029, -12, 02 and 10, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore a categorical exemption shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 14, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I further move that the planning commission find that the amendment MMU 21-07 to use permit UP 19-25, applied for by Carl Tharp, representing Coast Oak Inc. on a property located at 7560 Highway 20, Kelseyville, California, further described as APNs 007-029-12, 02 and 10, does meet the requirements of Section 27 AT and Section 51.4 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the amendment be granted, subject to the revised conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 14, 2021.
A second.
And just to be correct, 7560 Highway, I believe it's 29. There was a typo. I just wanted to clarify. So motion's been, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested party is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the Lake County Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. Eric, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay. Picking up our 925 item. It's a public hearing to consider major use permit UP 19-36. Applicant is Brian D. Pensac and Garrett D. Burdick, Lake Vista Farms LLC. Proposed project applicant is applying for 15 acres of outdoor commercial cannabis canopy area within five-fenced cultivation areas of 25.8 acres. Cultivation accessory items include portable toilets, trash enclosures, vegetative waste storage area, a 2,500-gallon water storage tank at each cultivation area, and Conex shipping containers and/or 8x8 storage sheds or similar for storage of pesticides, fertilizers, and hazardous materials. An onsite nursery within an existing barn, renovated 10x30 shipping container to house security equipment and camera monitors, and a six-foot tall security, excuse me, and a six-foot tall security fencing secured by lock gates to enclosed cultivation areas. The address is 2050 and 2122 Augulon Canyon Road, Clear Lake, California. And I believe Michael Taylor is going to give us his staff report.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. Good morning, everybody. I don't have a presentation at this time. Staff at this time would like to request a continuation for this major use permit. There is further analysis that we need to do with regard to Article 27 and the exclusion zone. It is located next to the city of Clear Lake, so we'd like to allow a little more time to explore what that looks like with regard to the city of Clear Lake in terms of support allowing the applicant and the city of Clear Lake and also the county to come up with a solution for that.
This is a county property, correct?
This is county property. It is located, actually, the property shares the same boundary as the city of Clear Lake. And per Article 27, it is in an exclusion zone. So anything within 1,000 feet of the sphere of influence of a city has to have the support of the jurisdiction.
And...
The adjacent jurisdiction.
Okay.
So we'd like to explore that a little more, more analysis that we can come back at
An undetermined date?
At this time.
Okay.
So that we can have a full analysis for you.
And thank you for that, Michael. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, just so that we can get a little bit more information as the commission and as the public. So we'll go ahead and open it and just be sure to state your first and last name.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and planning commissioners. My name is Richard Knoll. I represent the applicant Brian Pensac and Garrett Burdick, who are both here. Introduce them. We understand that there is a request by staff for continuance. Therefore, we don't want to provide any specific input regarding the project, but we do have a request that the matter be continued to the October 28 planning commission agenda. So the request is for a continuance to a date specific. And then, secondarily, we weren't really clear on, and still are not fully clear on the issue. We would like to, and we've had some discussion with county staff today about the rationale or the reason for the continuance, without getting into specific details about the matter. specific details about, uh, the matter of the setback from the city of Clear Lake. We understand that there's a question about that. We do have a letter, we've been to the city of Clear Lake, we do have a, a letter from them, um, you know, approving the reduced setback, but, uh, we, we want to meet with staff, make sure we provide the county with, with what they're looking for. Um, we, we've actually negotiated or started to negotiate with the city of Clear Lake, we've got a good, uh, momentum going there.
Okay.
So with that said, uh, hopefully, the commission, uh, can continue this to the 28th.
And do you feel that two weeks is going to be sufficient to get the information necessary for staff and...
Well, we, we feel that we've buttoned it up and that we're, we're in good shape, but evidently, there's something different or more that the county wants, and we, we need, yes, we, to answer your question directly.
Two weeks will do enough, okay.
We feel, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, while I still, go ahead, did you want to respond?
I just wanted to ask, um, Mr. Taylor as well if, uh, the 28th gives you adequate time to get to the bottom of whatever it is you're getting to the bottom of.
Uh, I, I suppose that would be sufficient if, um, the applicant and the city can come up with a solution, and then we can respond to it. Um, you know, it's going to be dependent on that.
Right.
Um, and, uh...
So could you describe specifically the issues with the city of Clear Lake?
Uh, it's conditions of approval that were provided, um, and I feel that, what the staff, uh, believe that...
Can you turn me to the microphone?
Yes, uh, believe the staff cannot support those at this time.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
If I may, I can clarify. One of the criteria for an application for a cannabis cultivation, one of the requirements to be heard is that if you meet certain criteria, you have to have a letter of support from the nearby city. The applicant here did provide a letter of support from Clear Lake, however, Clear Lake has conditioned its letter of support on a pair of conditions that they would like included in the application or in the permit. Those conditions are not conditions that your commission has authority to adopt. So if you do not include them, the letter is written, the letter from Clear Lake is written in such a way that if you do not include them, their support is not effective. So then the applicant no longer has a letter, therefore, they don't meet all the criteria to be heard by you.
Is this a question of inserting conditions that it's known the county, the commission cannot approve?
Correct.
I mean, is that an indirect form of a veto of this project?
Uh, they are conditions that your commission does not have authority to approve, period.
Right, but, and my question's a cynical one.
Oh, okay.
Were, were those conditions included intentionally?
Yes, they are, they are listed specifically...
But knowing that we, we cannot act on those conditions?
I can't speak for Clear Lake and Clear Lake staff, I don't know what they're, whether they, um, understood that, that your commission could adopt those conditions or not, but the conditions themselves were included specifically in the letter, and the letter said specifically that, that, that this is a letter of approval, provided that.
I understand.
So if they aren't adopted, the letter is not a letter of approval, and therefore, that condition isn't met.
Okay.
I guess I just have a problem with receiving a letter from the community, which is part of the process, but if it contains conditions that it's understood we can't act on, then it's really not, it's not productive.
That would be a recommendation for the board for the future, if you wanted to consider changes for the ordinance section.
I think these are really good points, and it seems to me that if we give them what they want, which is two weeks and a date, it, they can at least try to work it out.
Public comment is still open, I believe.
It is.
It is, so you can just state your name again for me, please, Richard.
Uh, thank you, Richard Knoll. Um, without, you know, I, I don't want to get into the specifics today because I understand that the public hearing is not open and, you know, the, the public really doesn't have an opportunity to hear this. But I do want to convey that the, the approval letter from the city of Clear Lake was, was certainly in good faith. Uh, I understand what county council is saying, um, and we understand that based on this, I, I guess I wish we understood it before now, that, that this would have been conveyed to us. This letter that we got from the city of Clear Lake goes back more than a year, or roughly a year. It was presented to the county. It didn't come up until literally last week that I'm aware of. But it sounds like we need to go back to the city of Clear Lake, and we've been negotiating with them on this matter, that we need to go back to them and get a new letter without any conditions. And we can do that. We, we feel real confident that we're going to be able to provide that to the planning commission.
Okay.
So...
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this agenda item? Jake, any hands in the Zoom room?
Uh, no, there are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you, Jake. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and, um, bring it back to the commission to, uh, make a motion in consideration of the, um, extent or the continuance for a date certain.
I would move that we table this until the 28th.
Just a technical point, we continue rather than table.
Sorry.
And you'd be continuing it to which date certain?
October 28th. Weeks from now.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um, motion shall carry. Okay, um, our next, um, item is item number six for 930, consideration of reimbursement, reimbursement for out-of-county travel for, or to a conference hosted by the California County Planning Commissioners Association. Address is 139 Second Street, Eureka, California, on October 15th through 16th, 2021, and the estimated cost will not exceed $1,008. Does anybody want to discuss this at all? Do we have to open to public comment as well? Okay. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Jake, is there by any chance any, uh, hands in the Zoom room?
Uh, nope, there are currently no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Any commissioners have any comments or anything to say about this? I, I will be in attendance, I'm super excited. Um, there's going to be a lot to learn, uh, the affordable housing projects that we'll go and get to see, I'm super excited for that, uh, not to mention, um, upcoming, um, systems that have been working in Humboldt County for, uh, CIZ, which is the cannabis industrial zoning that we get to learn about, so, um, I look forward to bringing up the information that, uh, I learn and, uh, share it with the rest of the commissioners.
Hello, I'll also be attending the conference, I'm really excited to learn, uh, and to be able to bring back, uh, a lot of information back to, uh, to the planning commission, so I'm really excited about that.
Sounds like a great opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna, yeah, pretty neat, pretty neat, so I appreciate the opportunity to, um, from the county to allow us to, to go up there and, um, fill our brains.
I hope to be attending portions of the conference as well, I really look forward to some education.
Excellent. So, um, we just need a motion to go ahead and, uh, and approve this, and we can get this wrapped up. Oh. Okay.
All I have is the brochure.
Okay, do you have, where it says memo 21-1044? Okay. If you would.
I'm getting a network error when I click on that, you got it.
I move to approve out-of-county travel for the planning commissioners to attend the California County Planning Commissioners Association Conference at 139 Second Street, Eureka, California, on October 15th through October 16th, 2021, and the estimated cost will not exceed $1,008.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
There isn't a note for that, right? Like, please note that the...
Okay. Um, do we have any, we'll move on to our untimed staff updates. Do we have any office news to discuss?
Anything from the director?
Oh.
We're, we're so excited.
What did you say? I thought you were going to...
She was, she was watching us.
No, 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 in the future, you can sit here. Yeah, I just wanted to observe. Oh, okay.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning, everybody. I am Mary Darby, and today is my seventh day here with the county of Lake, and I'm very excited. So I am the new director, and I did hear a lot of concerns that, you know, in the future, we will definitely take care of, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone, and I think it's going to be fun.
And where are you from?
So I'm originally from Southern California, but I moved to Atlanta, Georgia to plan for the Olympics in 1996.
Okay.
And kind of got captured and stuck there, with a family and kids and all that good stuff. So now that my children are of age, I could move, I always wanted to come back home. My husband is from Northern California, he grew up in the Fairfield area, he retired from Napa Valley Hospital. Okay, yeah. And, um, we made an agreement that if we ever came back to California, that Northern California was more beautiful than Southern California, so we moved to Northern. I just wanted to get to California, and I'm excited to be here, and, um, actually looking at, um, the county of Lake, it is, it has, um, features that I love, it's beautiful, and I think that I can be an asset to a lot of the things that are going on here, and I'm very excited about being here.
Welcome home.
Thank you, thank you, that sounds so good.
Yeah, definitely excited to have you.
Thank you.
Good energy, um, hope to be seeing some projects come our way in, really, um, Grow Lake County.
Yay. Thank you, you have any questions for me at this time?
No, it's, it's nice to see a face.
Thank you.
And, uh, we hope to see you around more.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you. Nicole, do you have anything to add?
I do not. Did, did any of the commissioners have questions for me?
No. Okay. I appreciate everyone's time, this meeting is adjourned.